Okay, good morning. Glad to be here with all of you. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, Jeff. Thank you, thank you. She's gonna keep me on track, Miss Sharon over there. Okay, let's do roll call first. Here.
Here.
Wonderful, looks like we have quorum and notice that the meeting was properly posted on September tenth, twenty twenty five. And now we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Moving on, I do not have any citizen participation this morning. So we will move into the approval of the minutes from the meeting on August twentieth.
I approve the minutes.
Wonderful, can I get a second? Great, all those in favor? Call the roll. Can you see it, Sharon? Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Let me go back, give me just a moment. If I ever touch something, then of course it takes me, you know, a second to get back. Oh goodness. How do I go back to the original? Oh, maybe that's what I need. Thank you, that would be helpful. Okay, moving on. Um, our second agenda item is a discussion and possible action regarding the monthly report and current current data pertaining to the Oklahoma County Detention Center from a designee. However, um, the designees from the detention center were not able to join us this morning due to a conflict. So we will move on from that agenda item. Okay, discussion regarding April focus group discussions with individuals detained in the Oklahoma County Detention Center. I believe this, we should have an attachment. Yes. You would like to pull that up. Um, I will do a quick. Um, good morning, Sharon, welcome. I should have brought probably a hard copy of this because this is rather small on our screen. Can you, are you all able to see it? No, it is the focus group. Yeah. So I have, I have it on my phone and I can pull it up and I will do a review of that for. There we go. Okay, so, uh, on September twelfth, trust member James Johnson and cab members DeShawn Jones and Chris Steele conducted focus group discussions with the women and the men who reside in uh, the Oklahoma County Detention Center. Um, I'm going to walk through the feedback and then provide an opportunity for my colleague DeShawn to share any additional comments and for uh, any discussion and or follow up. So for the men, uh, they indicated, oh, you've got it, wonderful. The men indicated the quality of food has improved and is good, but the portions are small. They requested more protein and calcium by way of milk in their diet. They stated the items served for breakfast is the same every day, two pieces of bread or cornbread and a slice of bologna and requested more variety in the food options. The men did say the items in the canteen are overpriced and too expensive. They revealed alternative options are available to the more expensive brand name items, but the quality of the generic brand items are deficient. They asked that nutritional shakes be added to the products available through the commissary. They did ask for access to dental floss. They communicated there are zero issues with bedbugs, roaches and mice. They said they are allowed out of their cell on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday for two to three hours each day, but requested more time out of their cells on Fridays for recreation and to shower. They talked about the electronic tablets having been taken away due to a shortage and certain individuals exhorting them for the tablets. They explained not having access to those tablets limits visitation opportunities and religious activities. The men said interactions with staff at the facility are positive, but depends on the individual staff member and the resident's attitude. They stated overall, interactions with staff are fair, appropriate and professional. They declared most staff go above and beyond when performing their job duties. They indicated access to health services is costly and slow, they're charged fifteen dollars for each request for medical attention. They indicated attention to and the quality of mental health care has improved, but requested free phone calls be reinstated to stay connected to family members. The men are happy and grateful for the additional programming and shared that programs give hope. They requested that an AM FM radio be installed in the general area of their pod to provide the opportunity to listen to music. They also requested access to reading material, playing cards and coloring books in the absence of electronic tablets. Areas for improvement include time out of the cells on Friday, additional changes of clothing when they are unable to shower, access to a law library and jalapenos in commissary, better processes for expressing concerns and communicating with staff. Several individuals articulated frustration in relation to the process for appearing in court. The men said the holding cells for court are unclean and they often miss meals when participating in court proceedings. They also highlighted a need to expedite the delivery of medical care and related services and expressed a desire to access showers on the weekends. They identified having routine time out of their cells during the week, improvement in the quality of food, cleanliness of the facility and interactions with staff is the most positive aspect inside the detention center. Moving on to the women, they indicated similarly that the quality of food is getting better, but portions are small. They said variety of food options is limited, especially for breakfast and requested to add eggs to the menu. They shared that the rice is not properly prepared. The women reported the items available in commissary are too expensive, but the selection is better. They reported that bedbugs and mice have gotten better, bedbugs are no longer a problem. They stated the cleanliness of their pod and facility in general has improved. They also stated it can be challenging to communicate with their families, especially for a person who is indigenous. They stated a strong desire for in-person visits with family members, especially children, and requested free phone calls be reinstated. The women indicated the interactions with the detention center staff are better, but said dealing with some staff can be difficult. They are routinely allowed out of their cells from nine AM to two PM four days a week on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. The women conveyed that access, oops, sorry, uh. That access to physical and mental health care is often slow and or delayed, but dental care is good. They communicated programming is getting better and expressed excitement about what is available through the detention center. The women indicated utilizing the kiosk for communication and financial transactions can be challenging for residents and family members who are unfamiliar with this kind of technology. Recommended areas of improvement include access to in-person visitation, cleaner showers, better quality of garments and a microwave that works. They indicated that the cleanliness of the facility, the orderlies on their pod and staff that go above and beyond is the most positive aspect inside the detention center. Okay. DeShawn, anything else that you would like to add? Good morning.
It was a wonderful, wonderful visit, uh, with the men and the women and the pods. They were, um, they were so positive. Uh, and they recognized that a lot of the issues, the time out of sales and stuff like that um, is because of a shortage of staffing. Um, and, and they're, they're really sympathetic about that. They were very complimentary, uh, of the staff, um, that for the most part, everyone treated them well, treated them with dignity and with respect. Um, you know, a couple of things that we highlighted that we thought were really important. Uh, number one, the, uh, the, the response time for medical care. Um, and what happens is when you submit those requests and they don't go through, then, then residents will submit another one and another one. And, and doing that moves you to the back of the line. Um, but, but if there, if there's something that at least lets you know, like we've received it, you know, you're in the queue, we're coming or whatever. But, but I think again, we recognize that it's a shortage of staffing that creates those things. Um, the food was, um, a huge deal. They actually saved a couple of trays for us to see. Um, and, uh, oh my goodness, it was, it was ridiculous. So if the women are saying, like the portions, like eat, this is like going to have lunch. They said it, this is like going to have lunch with your child at school. Um, and getting the same, the same plate that they get. Um, the, um, the, the programming, they were really excited about the programming. Um, OIC has launched, uh, both GED classes and job readiness classes, uh, for some of the specific pods. So they were very excited about that. And we're working through how to get the tablets back into, uh, the pods so that there will be enough of them. Um, but overall, it was, it was really a wonderful visit. And, and what they reflected is, is really the good work that CAB is doing um, in interceding for their needs and bringing their concerns to the forefront. So it was a great visit.
Good, wonderful, thank you so much for sharing that additional input. Um, I will just make comment and state that I have served on the citizens advisory board as well as the vice chair for, I don't know, Sharon, like three and a half years. It's been a really long time. And I have had just the distinct privilege of being able to, you know, conduct the focus groups within the detention center over that span of time. And I just want for public record for it to be stated, what a dramatic, what a dramatic improvement. Um, I certainly have seen and, you know, I have witnessed others who even from the jail trust and from the cab that have also gone in and sat alongside the men and the women and the reports coming out continue to be, yes, indeed, there's areas for improvement. I'm certainly not, uh, relinquishing that, but I do think it is worthy that we pause for a moment and just acknowledge that there's been a number of improvements. The food, yes, every time I go in, there's always comments about the food and, and rightfully so. It's, that's a challenging, um, aspect of, of the detention center's responsibilities. But that it's improving and they continue to say it's improving. Um, uh, the, the staff, the interactions with staff, you know, there was a time where we never got anything positive about staff. And now we're starting to hear so much more about how they're being treated with dignity and respect. And yes, indeed, staffing continues to be probably one of the greatest issues. Um, but in spite of that, right, there are staff that are showing up and, um, and, and, and presenting in a way with strong values. And so I think that's worth noting as well. Um, programming of, you know, we hear that, I've heard that since day one. And, uh, you know, just love to know that OCI is also, you know, leaning in on that front and would like for the cab to specifically focus on that more intentionally as well. Commissary continues to be a, an issue. And so I did speak, um, late last, or early last week with members of the, the staff at the detention center about getting a list. So I think for me and for the cab, it would be helpful for us to just review the list of what is provided in commissary, what are the prices, you know, because they continue to communicate that the pricing is too high. And so I think just for our knowledge, you know, I think it's on us to do, do diligence to review. Um, what is being provided, the pricing for that and just assessing, is that indeed appropriate? Or are there some additional things that we can recommend, um, to the jail trust and to the, uh, staff at the detention center? Um. Any additional comments about the report and or follow up?
I, I want to add to that. The, they gave us some great examples from, uh, the commissary. A bar of soap, ten dollars. Um, a small, uh, like, like noodles or cereal, six dollars. You know, the, the kinds of things that. And, and get for a dollar or two. I, I would like to suggest, um, as, as we review what's in there and what it costs, uh, that we also take a look at what is the process for the vendor who's in the commissary? Is that an external bid? What is, what is that, what does that look like?
And I can, I can provide some context to that. The detention center did engage in, uh, a, a process. A contract with Benchmark, that is the entity that provides the commissary as well as the food, um, at the detention center. Um, I am familiar with Benchmark and so, you know, I think it's again appropriate for us to look at that list to identify maybe where there's some areas where we could even provide recommendations to, again, maybe not direct to Benchmark, but through the detention center. Um, yeah, so just in, in follow up to that question, Jeff, did you have a comment?
I did, uh, some of these things that, you know, we're, we're looking at this report, we've seen now the past few times that we've gone in to, to do these types of, of reviews and, and interview people and you commented on that. But there are a couple of things here and, and I might suggest, number one, on the, the commissary, that's what I understood also from some of my questions last time, that it's actually the food vendor. I'd been being told that it would be bid separately and it's not. Um, I'm familiar with the, with the vendor also and how they do pricing. Uh, certainly there are outside entities who are interested in this population and nonprofits in the community who have expressed an interest to be able to provide those services for less. And so it, uh, I think it would be a good thing to review the list. Uh, and, uh, I have questions about why did we do this with Benchmark? Why did we not treat it as a separate, separate item and a separate contract? It might, might help a little bit in that way. This seems to be something that can help with the population and, and maybe keep volatility, uh, volatility low. Um, it might be an easy thing to do and really partner with the community on this. Um, uh, i- i- it's a bigger issue than I expected until I came in and I listened to it. Uh, the other thing is that we keep coming up with the, the comments about the medical services. And I know we're understaffed with medical services and are trying to build up something internally. But I've asked before and I would like to see if we may, we can make a formal, uh, request. Uh, certainly there have to be numbers about these calls coming in, uh, and how that charge is, is incurred, what those, that fifteen dollar charge is being used for. But also how quick is that response? What are the type of calls that we're getting? I have, do have some concerns because I, I have talked to staff and they've talked about what they do when people are coming in. Uh, and are at risk for going into withdrawal. Uh, but as I ask different questions, I'm not sure that they are always getting appropriate care. I know when I was on one of the pods, there were two people upstairs and closed doors that were according to the, the residents there going through withdrawal. And, you know, we have some issues with deaths in the jail, other things happening right now. You know, just alcohol withdrawal is one of the most dangerous things that there is. Uh, and so if we have people going through this, we need to make sure that they have appropriate care. Certainly understand we have an opiate problem going on, a fentanyl problem in, in the jail. There's some other things that potentially we could look at, uh, and really maybe help guide the jail and open up some opportunities to take advantage of opiate funding that is out there. Uh, different opportunities to really engage in those treatment services. And as we've seen, and I'll bring this up later, uh, and as we were talking about before the meeting, there are significant cuts to behavioral health services in the community. Uh, the, the community that we have, uh, the part of the community that we have in the jail right now, who are gonna be back on out, out of the jail at some point, no longer have access to the services that they need to keep them from coming back into the jail. So this is likely a discussion that's gonna be had. These are, are, these are costs that are gonna be passed on to the community at municipal level, but also at county level. Uh, and it's gonna contribute to all these different things that we see that increase recidivism. So it's probably worth a discussion there, so thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or recommendations for follow up for future, uh, our future meetings? I heard two in particular, one being the commissary breakdown of which I will obtain. And then more, uh, reporting, so to speak, on the medical services, specifically the fifteen dollar charge, as well as how many requests are being made. Okay. All right, anything else? What button did you push? Oh my goodness, okay. I am not at all. Here, pull, pull your mic down, that would be great, thank you so much.
Yeah, so I had a meeting with Mr. Tammons and, and I've got a copy of all the financials and I've spent a lot of time going through that. And as we all know, that jail's been underfunded and understaffed since day one. And we need to do a full court press. Somebody that's responsible for this, the jail trust needs to get with the board, the budget board, say, we need more money. I couldn't believe that we're trying to make money off the commissary and the phone calls from people that don't have any money. But we've got like a five, I forget what it was, five or six million dollar shortfall for this year. So they kinda have to have that money. If we took the phone money and the commissary money away from them, we're gonna come up short, shorter than we already are. I looked at the financials and just use that, the number forty. That's about what the starting salary is over there. And forty million dollar budget, well, it's been flat for the last three years. And I talked to some of the people on that budget board and I told them, you guys found the money to give yourself about a forty-five thousand dollar a year raise. But the guys over there in that jail, it's been forty thousand dollars and it's been flat for the last three cycles. If we're just keeping up with inflation, it ought to be about forty-seven thousand. And if we're keeping up with inflation, the jail's gonna need about forty-seven million instead of forty. And nobody's addressing that. And so we're, we're nibbling around the edges. You know, if I send you down to the gas station to fill up my truck and it takes a hundred dollars to fill it up and I give you eighty, and then I'm mad at you because you come back without a full tank of gas and blame it on you, and that's what we're doing over there. And if you guys have been in there, we, we spent over a million dollars on maintenance. Well, it's neglect for the last thirty years. And now we're trying to play catch up. And the elevators don't work. We're talking about how long it takes to get people out of the jail. Well, the elevators don't work. Have you been in there and had to wait thirty minutes on an elevator? It's crazy. And the little slider doors, they don't work. And then we wonder why it takes so long to get people out of jail. And, and I'm kinda getting off track there, but the big deal is we need to do a full court press, get on. If the trust can't do it, they need to resign and we need to get people on the trust that have more influence, influence with the board to get more money for the jail. We can't, we just keep acting like we're gonna figure this deal out underfunded and it's just not gonna work. And I'm not one of these people that think more money will fix anything, but that jail needs more money, no question. So we need to get on the trust and say, you guys figure out how to give us more money, or we need to get people on the trust that can give us more money. That would be my recommendation on the advisory. That would be my recommendation on the advisory board. Get people on that trust that can do the job of getting us more money.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
I wanted to, having been on the pod probably about three or four times now. One of the things, and I know you mentioned uh the women's part. And one of the things that's turned us, at women, the hygiene of the women and the uh women products. And not having enough. And one that is that not having enough products and uh as they're on their uh youthful. Uh, they adore the tissue. And and they begin to, and as they afford the tissue, they flood the plastic. Because they're, you know, they're using whatever they can. And it's not simply one of big issues to to the men, but to the women, you know, uh they've talked about that. So they're talking about not only the best in the quality, but also the atmosphere of air. Because they're the older. And and they talked about that, that uh something has to be done in that consideration. And we're going to have their own dynamic proposal and we have to pay attention to that. Uh, attention to that. And so then they uh, you know, they, you know, after I, I'm having an opportunity to be published there. And I would think that we could uh shut down something and now I'm thinking of salt. Like the wrong of meat, which are very expensive, you know, uh, that is. You know, so they're very expensive, but then along the island that I lost, salt and not cheese. And um, so those are the things that they have to buy. And, you know, so we're not touching on self-worth. And so uh, we could get someone, you know, you uh, the meals are not that great to me. The rice was uh not too good for the women and so and so.
And you uh have those type of items, so you got all this salt and sugar. And then you have these items, uh, the meals are not cooked thoroughly. I know they, you know, they have to do it, you know, and so I would ask that we we look at those things. And I agree with the gentleman in that the jail trust. The families, I don't think we realize the burden that we're putting on the families outside. And so when you, we're gonna have to look at finding more money to build a jail. And the maintenance of this jail. And people wonder why people are against giving more money. Because when you're settling their backs, phone calls, doctors to see the doctor, fifteen dollars. And people are coming out of their individual pockets and the word spreads. Why should we give more money when I have to pay for for my son and my daughter to see the doctor? Or I have to pay, I'm paying huge prices for them just to have, you know, and most people say, well, they don't deserve. Uh, have pleasure or have a cookie. And so families say to themselves, we're burdened down as it is. Now you want to come back to us and say, we need more money for the jail. We need more money for a maintenance of a jail and to build another jail. And that's why it makes it hard, because it's like you're slapping us in the face in the front and in the back. And you're asking for more when we don't have more. And so I think that the jail trust needs to take that in consideration as they move toward. Because they're gonna have to ask for more money to build that new jail. And they can say they don't, but they're gonna have to ask. And people are not going to be willing because they're saying, you're in my pocket, back pocket, front pocket. I don't have it to give.
I would like to ask, um, what is the amount of money that is collected from the residents in a given year? Uh, those those fifteen dollar charges, um, you know, whatever amount comes to the jail from the commissary. What what is that amount of money in the current budget where where we see was this amount?
It's about between the between the phone calls. And the commissary, I think it was like one point eight million dollars. Yeah. So that's why I said it's significant. We're five or six million short. You take two million off that, I personally, I think it's lunacy that. You don't have free phone calls in there for people to keep in contact with their family. But again, we gotta have more money for the jail first. And. We just talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. We all know we need more money and we've always needed more money. And we just adjourn and schedule a next meeting and come back in a month and talk about how we need more money. And on that budget board. With the exception of one of them, I've got all their cell phone numbers. I talk to them all the time. And it's like, it's just me personally talking to them and it's like. Okay, this conversation's over and we hang up and they go on about their business. We have to come together as a board and say, this is what we've gotta do. It it's like, I one was at my car lot the other day and he did, he just turned around and walked off. Right Harley's with him. He just, but when we're talking about more money for the jail, he just turned around and walks off. And I'm friends with him and I can't get his attention, so. We've got to figure that that out, like I say, just say two million. And and take that off the top and now we're instead of being five or six short, we're gonna be seven or eight short.
Because what's the alternative? I mean, in in real language, you know, we, whether it's we as a society, we as the families. We as uh the cab, we as the the trust, what's the alternative? We we can keep going down this road, but we need some money. And 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 if we already don't have enough staff. We are setting ourselves up and the people who have been faithfully doing this work. We're setting them up for a dangerous situation. I know that every time they they find um a person in a cell who is deceased. Then then all of the criticism starts all over again. But the truth is, just because we don't have enough staff. And 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 a part of that is, pay them, you know, we've gotta pay them. We're headed toward a situation where a staff member gets hurt. And then all of this rolls downhill. Um, you know, the these are the people who are charged with, I mean, from a societal way of thinking about it, keeping the bad people in the bad place. Um, even though that's not true, but but that's the reality and that means we all have a stake in it.
We're gonna have to figure out a way to get some continuity in the leadership in that jail. And again, that falls on the jail trust. Yeah, I talked with Mr. Timmons, I probably spent. A hundred hours on the phone with him in the last couple, and I'm probably exaggerating. A lot of time I went over there and visited and turned the jail and and. I talked to him Sunday night. And I said, you're on the agenda tomorrow, they're discussing your, he said, well, he didn't know anything about it. He didn't know they were getting ready to discuss. He comes in here and all of a sudden he's resigned and he had no idea he was getting ready to resign the next day. And I don't know the specifics of it, the details, it's not important, but. Again, it falls on that trust to get continuity in that leadership over there. We're on leader number three this year. And. They've named Kimri. What do they call it? Interim. Now, they'll just leave him at interim for from now on until they want another interim. Why aren't we looking for the best of the best of the best right now? Why we have an interim? That's why you have an interim. You're supposed to be looking for the best of the best of the best while you have an interim. We'll just call him an interim for a year or two until we need another interim. Again, it falls on that trust. They need to get some continuity in that leadership or we can't ever fix anything.
Yeah.
I wanna add to that and and stop treating the interim like the enemy.
Exactly.
You know, the 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 lead over at the county jail is not the enemy of the trust.
So hard to think, yeah. Yeah. You know, I really appreciate everyone's passion and enthusiasm and also. A desire for some action. Um, you know, I I think it goes without saying that the cab has has had its own ups and downs over the years. Um, and even a period of just kind of where nothing was happening for a number of reasons. Uh, and, you know, I'm I'm grateful to have new colleagues by by my side especially. Um, and and colleagues that have uh a true. I would consider vested interest in seeing the detention center improve. Um, and what I would like, and we've got a number of agenda items by which I think that we can even flesh this out even further. But what I would like to see is when we conduct these focus groups, that beyond just a report out. To the jail trust, that we have actionable steps. Okay, because of this new report, we advise this, this, and this. Um, I think with anything that we do going forward, there needs to be feedback up to the jail trust. Beyond just this is what we're hearing, it should be this is what we're hearing and this is what we recommend um for next steps. So that is certainly something that I I would like to advocate for and it certainly, I feel as though you all. Uh, we're we're on the same page on that, but if not, please let me know. Okay. Well, this has been a very healthy dialogue. I don't know that we necessarily need approval on this, Sharon, do we? We can just accept it, yeah. Um, so we don't need a motion um to approve that report, uh, but just. Okay, let's do that. I need a motion to receive the report regarding the April focus group discussions. Someone. Can I get a second? Did someone second? I know, I think. Okay. Alright. What's, Deshawn was, yep. Yes, alright, we call the roll. Yes.
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 Wonderful, so accepted. Alright, on to the next agenda item discussion and possible action to elected chair and vice chair. Uh, for those that are not aware, our um our esteemed chair and. Uh, respected colleague Chris Steele has resigned. Um, as chair of the Citizens Advisory Board primarily due to personal reasons. He has done a considerable amount of work um over the last three and a half years. It's been a pleasure to work alongside him. Uh, but as a result of that resignation, we do need to discuss uh who should be, who would like and who should be elected. Uh, as that replacement chair and then um vice chair if if necessary. Like to open the floor for discussion?
How how does that process work? What are, what is, is there a term limit? What what does that look like?
There, the, if there were term limits, I think that I, I think that I was not informed of those, so no, there are no term limits. I think it's just at the at the will of the individual that's elected, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you die?
Until you, until you no longer want to serve essentially.
This is my second meeting, certainly I'm not gonna be chair or vice.
Sure. Of course.
So. Again, do we have any volunteers or do we have any nominations? Sharon, I guess.
Sharon, do you have any nominations? No, in in full disclosure, oh, were you gonna say something?
Well, I know that you have acted, Erin, has have acted as vice chair under Chris Steele. I think most of us are uh pretty new uh to this uh advisory board. Uh, my recommendation, if I'm in order, if I'm in order and if I'm not, Sharon, would you please acknowledge that to me? Would that I would like to nominate Erin to be the chair. Because for that three years you act as the vice chair, so there is some fluent. And so that is my recommendation. Yes, that is a motion. I would like to, Erin, I'm pronounce your last name. I don't wanna mispronounce it.
Very good, it's Inglekey.
Eaglekey. I would like to nominate Erin Eaglekey as chair of this Citizens Advisory Board.
Alright, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Can I, can I approve myself, Sharon? Sure, okay, yes.
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 Alright, thank you. Moving on then, that leaves a vacancy in the vice chair uh position. Would like to open up the floor for nominations for the vice chair.
I know that uh Furlan and I feel like this is only our second meeting. And so we don't, we don't feel qualified to to step in and nominate ourselves. So with the other two of you, um, I would ask, is there any interest?
Yeah, I would like to hear that as well. And and can I, can I just also say that my very first meeting of the Citizens Advisory Board. Chris was nominated as chair and I was nominated as vice chair. I hadn't even attended one meeting.
Okay, okay.
So.
I think I could do vice chair with you or leaders.
Yeah, I think you don't have to have significant amounts of time on, you know, I think it's more about.
Call you every day.
Oh, well, okay then.
Don't vote for that guy.
Okay, um, no.
Uh, then I would make a motion that Furlan Kearns uh be nominated for the position of vice chair.
Does anyone else have any interest before we move on in the vote? Yes.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that was far simpler than I had anticipated. Alright. Okay, so our next agenda item is the discussion and possible action regarding subcommittees and how to move forward. So there's a little bit of historical um context to this. Uh, when we first began, we did set a a number of subcommittees. Uh, by which there was then a chair that was appointed for each subcommittee. Those subcommittees met separate and apart from this cab. Uh, I will say that for some of the subcommittees, they were very, very active. I can only speak to those that I served on. I was chair of the Recruitment and Retention of Staff Subcommittee. There was a lot of action and movement there, very proud of the work that we were able to accomplish on that subcommittee. Um, we also had a an operations subcommittee and then a policies and procedures subcommittee. Am I forgetting any, Sharon? I think it was the three. Okay. It's been, it's been a little bit since the, since the subcommittees have met. So as we look forward with a a mutual agreement already. That we want to be more action oriented in terms of recommendations to the jail trust. Do do we as a collective also feel as though there's value in having subcommittees that are doing. What I would consider more boots on the ground, maybe it's research, pulling data. Um, engaging community members to also serve on those subcommittees. That was a component of uh the prior structure was that it, the subcommittees had to be comprised of. The majority of sub of cab members, but then could be supplemented by members of the community. With perhaps expertise, let's say, for the recruitment and retention of staff, maybe an HR perspective or something to that. Um, uh lens, through that lens. So let's, let's just pause for a moment and talk about the necessity of subcommittees. And, you know, quite frankly, just because we have those three subcommittees does not mean that those need to be the three subcommittees we need going forward. A lot has changed. A lot has changed in three plus years. And I think now is a really remarkable time for us to, if necessary, wipe the slate clean and start fresh.
I, I would, I would ask for some parameters around, so I understand staffing in first and out. Uh, but some parameters around operations and then around policies and procedures.
So, I.
What, what was the original thinking?
Right. Well, so I didn't serve on either of those two subcommittees, so I don't have a tremendous amount of knowledge about what was discussed necessarily. However, you know, there was a lot of discussion around just a lack of, um, what I would consider structure when it comes to policies and procedures, so manuals, it's the, there was a, a healthy amount of discussion all the time and, and I continue to hear this even when I engage in the focus groups around even the detainee manual. So, like, from a training standpoint, when a detainee comes in, how are they onboarded, so to speak, to be a resident? So, just those kinds of procedural aspects were built into the policies and procedures. Now, operate, to me, quite frankly, I think there's duplication between operations and policies and procedures. I think there's a lot of overlap. So, I don't know that there, and Sharon may remember more about the operations. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Community relations was the other one and I did serve on that one as well. I thought there was a fourth one. Yeah. But as far as the operations, I don't believe that that subcommittee really met very often, so it's difficult for me to recall what emerged out of those discussions. But then to Sharon's point, there was also the community relationship, which was more focused on engaging with the families, but also raising awareness of what changes were happening, you know, at the, at the detention center, but also finding a way to, not, I, I wouldn't say like shift perceptions, but that is part of it. You know, I think that there's a lot that the community doesn't know that's happening. That, you know, both positive and negative, but I think they hear more negative than the positive. And, you know, I think that we can be a voice for more good, especially if we're doing our due diligence to bring forward actionable steps for the jail trust. Yes, sir.
The, um, we, we had discussion on this on the last CAB. Chris had the notes down, the different committees.
Okay.
And who won, do we have that information? Handy where we can see it?
I think all of the minutes on that, there were all no action on all those items.
There were, there were no action. I was wondering if we had.
So, you have to watch the video? Watch the video.
Okay. The, the, I just didn't know if we had something we could go back and look at.
There's no minutes for that.
So, just so I'm clear, Jeff, there was discussion about the subcommittees and interests?
Yes.
On behalf of who could potentially serve?
Yes, he went through on each, each item and, you know, these committees, who's interested in this? This is what this subcommittee does, is, would be the expectation, who has an interest in chairing or participating on various subcommittees. And so I just thought it would be helpful if we had that somehow where we could look at it. I probably have notes on it, Chris probably has notes on it because he was taking notes.
Yeah.
So, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, subcommittees, the personnel and staff, operations, I, I think about operations in terms of how the business of the county detention center is done. Uh, there was a great example at the last meeting. We looked at statistics of the population. There was a high percentage of the population that were in custody for public drunkenness. And, and I think related to that, obstructing an officer. One of our other members said, well, if a person is inebriated, why not take them to the public amnesia? Everybody knows about the public amnesia. Problem was, none of us knew. And so if we don't know, then isn't it a, a possibility that Oklahoma City Police Department, who is the, the largest user, I guess, of the, um, of the county detention center, that they don't know? Something like that would be an idea or, or war system, I guess, that the Operations Subcommittee could take on because it addresses how the business at the county detention center is done. And then policies and procedures, which to your point, Erin, is manuals and processes within the jail itself. How onboarding is done, how many academies are done? They, they've got a new class right now at the academy. And so while that's happening, they can't conduct the mini academy, which allows agencies external to the jail to come in and provide services. Uh, and then community relations, which, um, you know, of course makes sense. You know, the, the purveyors of some, of some good news or at least provocative thought coming out of CAB to help influence support for the work at the county jail. So, so those four subcommittees, personnel and staff, operations, policies and procedures, and community relations. Okay. I'm, I am interested in personnel and staff.
Do we have agreement about those four specific subcommittees?
I agree with those and, um, I am interested in community relations because I think what has been happening is, I hate to say our branding, but our branding is terrible. And because we don't have any branding, because we're not communicating to the public and the public's view of us is so negative. And, um, one of the things you talk about, people that are, you, you, you have a community of folks in there, but they're homeless. People don't realize that it is a collective group in there that some really don't even need to be in there. You know, they need to be other places seeking other help or getting other assistance. So, my, uh, interest is in community relationship and what the community knows about the jail and how we communicate to them what is going on. And because as we move forward, I hate to keep saying it, as we move forward, talking about money to build a new jail, we're gonna have to do something. As we talk about money to keep up the jail that we have now, we're going to have to do something. And it's hard. Uh, I'm going to say from the standpoint, I would tell my children, it's hard to ask me if you can go to the mall and get some money to go to the mall, but you haven't did what you need to do and you haven't stepped up to the level. So, it's kinda hard to go to the public and say, hey, we need so and so. We don't know anything about you. Folks are still dying in the jail. You're still understaffed. The staff are complaining. We know nothing. And so I think, um, that is critical. But also critical is tell the truth. Tell the truth. Don't gloss it, don't, don't make up stories. The public deserves the truth. The truth. And I think that is critical.
Well said. Go ahead.
I think those four, four subcommittees would be fine. I don't wanna put blinders on either like this. I talked to Brian Monn the other day and, and they're gonna put it on the ballot in the spring to get more money. And we need to, how's that gonna be worded? Is there gonna be wording in that for maintenance or upkeep of the old jail while we're building the new jail? And so we need to, we need to stay in contact with those people, kinda like a liaison. I was talking to this gentleman before the meeting today and I would like as a group, and I don't know which committee it would fall under, but I talked to Adam Pugh out of, you know, the state senator and I was explaining to him how some of these people in federal court, they go to court and the judge tells them, I want you to check into Texarkan, Arkansas on October 1st. Or in Oklahoma County, they go to court. It can be something petty, but they're going to prison, nonviolent, whatever. And they walk into court, they've got a plea agreement, they plead guilty, they handcuff them, they take them to the county jail, they spend two months there, then they go to Lexington for a month. And then we take them out here to Clearwaters and drop them off, take the belly chains and leg irons off and tell them to get out there and pick up trash. Why don't we just go straight to Clearwaters? And I was talking to Adam about that and he said that if we as a board wanted to do that, he would get us in front of the right people. It's a simple, simple amendment to existing statute. And I'm gonna do that, but I would like to have the support of this advisory board. You know, there's 250 people over there in that jail right now, what, go to penitentiary? I, we can't do that with all of them, but we can certainly do it with some of them. So, some sort of liaison with the legislature. You know, we need to be bold, let's get something done. And I think, you know, everybody I talk to, every single person I talk to about this says, why can't we be like the federal government? On those nonviolent people that aren't a threat and they're not a flight risk, let them go check in. And eliminate that 90, 120 days of maximum security.
So, I'm. I, yeah, I think, yeah, for sure. I think that falls under operations and I would even, because we've talked already so much about just the financial aspects of what it takes to operate, you know, the detention center, I would even argue that we adjust the name of that subcommittee to finance and operations or something to that effect. I just think it's important if that, if that is something that we want to prioritize, then let's name it. So, it could be budget and operations or finance, finance, I, I don't know. Finance and operations, okay. Yeah.
For, um, for exactly what that subcommittee does.
Right. Okay, any interest on behalf of anyone on the CAB to serve on finance and operations? Perfect. Furlan?
You didn't see me nod my head, did you?
Got it. Um, what about for policies and procedures?
I have an interest.
You do, wonderful, great, we need you.
I think Jimmy Durant, uh, is interested in this.
Okay, okay, great. And it's, I mean, as you heard me say even earlier, I served on two subcommittees when the subcommittees were active, so it's not out of the realm of possibility for you to serve on more than one. So, I, you know, if you have an interest in that, please go ahead and communicate that.
I'm interested also with communications with my background.
Yep. Great.
And I am also interested in, uh, policy and procedures.
And I continue to have a passion for the recruitment and retention of staff and the community relationships.
I would be interested in budget.
Right. Definitely need you. With the, uh, finance and operations, yep. Okay. Wonderful. I would, um, like to entertain a motion to, uh, I would say move forward with those specific subcommittees, again, finance and operations, recruitment and retention of staff, community relationships, and policies and procedures. Can I get a motion? Second. All right, call the roll. Yes.
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 Wonderful, thank you all. Okay, our next ag- agenda item is discussion and possible action regarding medical services for residents inside the detention center. And I understand that this was a carryover agenda item, I believe, or was requested at the last CAB meeting. And so, um, who would like to begin discussion on this?
That probably came from me, so that's.
Wonderful.
Bringing it up. Yeah, there, there were a couple of things and I, and I've already commented on it. Looking at these, what are our, what are the plans moving forward with provision of medical services? And so to me, it's been communicated that it's to build the capacity within the organization and not to, to contract out. But there are a lot of things I think that we're missing also with understanding that. Number one, we're not staffed at a level to, to deal with the population. What were, I had several questions, what are, there was a lot of reference to what we were being presented to comparing to other jails. So, where do we compare to other jails as far as medical services? The, uh, looking at the services that we offer, the response times to services, what our capabilities are, but also to explore opportunity with partnering and contracting with local providers to help fill gaps in these services, behavioral health being one in the capabilities with behavioral health, med, contracts being another, uh, and looking at opportunities to, to do med contracts with locals. And to, that could potentially reduce cost. But it needs to be, what's a full review of what we have in place now, what the rec, I'd also say the recommendations of the medical staff at the jail, what they see going forward, what's needed. And, and certainly with much of what we're looking at, particularly on the mental health side, there's been tremendous discussion over the last several years about recidivism and that being related to mental health care and the inability to, to receive mental health care. What's our, what's our exit strategy with everybody? What are we doing to, uh, ensure that people are linked into services as they leave, a warm handoff uh, as they leave into those services? Because if that's cost, a, and I'm not saying this is a cost that necessarily has to be expended by the county, there are other services out there that are being paid for by other sources such as the state. Although like, as I mentioned, the state's not paying for those resources right now. So, why is that? I, I received a text while I was sitting here. County commissioner is, is pulling together a town hall to talk about this and what's happening. So, these are all things and especially if they're doing a town hall at the county that certainly this board should be participating in and, and seeing what they have to say. This all comes together, it's not just on the jail, and this goes back to a communications part on this. We, it's, everybody's pointing to the jail and saying, you fix this, you fix this, you fix this. There's some other people that have to fix this also and that are part of the broader system. So, uh, I'm thinking we can start a formal process, let's actually review it, let's see what, where we are. And then also get opinion from those experts, not just within jail staff, we should also be asking experts in the community, what should this look like and how can we envision this being something that actually works? We have a requirement in the jail to provide these services. It's not about rationing out care, we're not, you, when I heard the stories about people trying to get Tylenol for a headache and having somebody deliver Tylenol two weeks after they made a request. You know, little things like that, there have to be different procedures that we can look at to, to make things a little more fluid and, and to help. And certainly with that $15 charge, which I keep going back to, I understand having to pay a co-pay. If anybody was trying to go to a doctor, $15 is a pretty, pretty reasonable co-pay. But there's some things we ought to be looking at, partnership, you need this, everybody has the 15. And how are we charging it? If we are charging every time somebody hits a button to ask for services and they're not getting services, then that's a problem. And the, we need to really have an understanding of how this system is working, what we need to do to go forward. And it seems like our role also is to review this and also help staff have a voice in saying, this isn't working. I personally know of a situation where we had a drug company was trying to offer the jail free, uh, injectables for, uh, serious mental illness. And certainly there's a tie to that because they want those injectables started in jail so that it will continue on the outside. But it's also Medicaid compensable, so that the folks on the outside would have access to continuing this. There's opportunity to have partnership within the jail to start this early before somebody leaves and then follow up at community level. These are all things that need to, to be discussed and, and certainly could reduce cost in the jail and reduce problems in the jail.
I agree with you, but I think too also, um, the level of what is communicated policy and procedure and staffing, the information that goes out about the medical, how much staff? You know, I know we are given a glimpse of how much staff is involved, medical staff. But I would like a clear understanding, how much staff, how many doctors, how many nurses, how many folks are there? The availability. The availability of staffing, uh, then the level of medical need. Uh, what is deemed urgent? You made a statement in that someone gets, uh, Tylenol two weeks later. What is considered emergency and critical care? Are they moved up? Do they have to wait? Who deems or who defines what is medical? What is medical? My concern is that, you know, could some of the deaths that have occurred in the jail been avoided if a different level of defining their medical need had been looked at? Did somebody say, well, maybe it's not that bad? Maybe, uh, was it a pre-existing condition on top of something else that occurred in the jail? They got sick again that caused them, you know, I think, you know, we need to look at, does that contribute or is that a part of some of those deaths that have taken place in the jail? Because for me, now this is for me, there are too many unanswered questions about some of the deaths. It's not just your son or your daughter died. Was that a pre-existing condition within that person? Did they see medical staff in a timely manner? Did they receive an assessment? You know, so then how much staff? Because we may be overwhelming the staff. There may not be enough staff there. I don't, you know, to see everyone. And so you just kind of like, we'll get to you, we'll get to you, we'll get to you. Or how many people say, well, and it may not seem like a lot to us. I can't afford the fifteen dollars. That may not seem like a lot, but said, well, I'm not gonna put into the thing that I need to see the doctor. I'll just ride it out. It's just a headache. I'm just throwing up. And so all of that policy and procedure, staffing, and then what is being communicated? Because I've gotten phone calls, as a pastor, I've gotten phone calls from mothers or grandmothers. My daughter or my son is in there and, and he's sick as a dog or he hasn't received his medicine or she's not taking her mental health medicine, you know. And so I think it's a combination, uh, of a lot of things. And I think that we have to look at it and be serious about looking at it because I think it will also have decreased the amount of fatalities in that jail. Not just, let's stop writing it off. Um, they will say, uh, we say, oh, they must have got a hold of some Fentanyl. Everything is not about Fentanyl. It's not just Fentanyl that's causing some of those deaths. And that, again, the public deserves to know the truth. And if we don't have the staffing, what can we do moving forward to get additional staffing?
I think that, kind of add to that too, and what you brought up, we should know what we're dealing with as far as cases. What are our risks within the jail and be very open about that. I, I know we are gonna see a lot of Fentanyl in the jail, but you're right, it's not just that. Uh, we're gonna see these things. We're, you know, how are we combating it now? Right now, likely, we're using Suboxone probably in the jail. And I imagine that there's a, a procedure for getting that, that out. But there are issues with Suboxone that make it probably difficult in this population. There's an intravenous, uh, medication that can be used instead of it, a once a month shot, that is gonna cost more. Uh, but on the longer, long term, does it actually save us money because of the, the, the problems that we might have with distribution of, of Suboxone? And the use of Suboxone. So these are all things I think that are interesting discussions, uh, to look at and probably discussions that haven't taken place. Um, you're gonna have two of us on, on the board with, uh, with a significant amount of, uh, time working within the behavioral health and medical systems. And so these are the questions we start asking on how do we help? And that's why I'm interested in procedure. How do we help with procedure and, and what we can do? But really elevating that voice, I know we have good medical staff at the jail. I don't think we have anywhere near enough medical staff at the jail. And especially knowing that it is building up, really wanna hear what they see. Because I guarantee they have a picture of it. And, you know, what, what are you seeing? What are your primary, uh, concerns from that level? But then also have a few people who help look from the outside and say, well, this is what we see also and how we, we do a plan. I'm a, always in favor of you build something, what do you want it to look like? Let's not worry about what the constraints are or anything. Let's build a plan. In a perfect world, this is what we want. And then we'll start working backwards to start implementing the things necessary to get there. Uh, and if it means changing, then, then we change. I know we had problems with contracting before. That doesn't mean that we're gonna have problems moving forward. Contracting and certainly there's a, a hybrid that I, that we can come up with to make this cost effective, uh, and much more efficient in terms of serving the population.
I'm a true believer in talking with the people working inside that building.
Hundred percent. I am too.
These focus groups are great. I asked Mr. Timmons, I wanted to go over there and just sit for a shift on a Friday night. And I'm certain, he said, anytime you wanna do it. So I'm sure the new director will be open to that as well. I was talking to that one lady and she said, we just need a bunk and junk officer. Yeah. What happens over there? So the person that's really, you know, we're all talking about, why does it take so long to get people out of the jail? And the person that's releasing the people has to go upstairs with them nice elevators and those nice doors that don't open and close and elevators that don't work. And go up there, get the person, bring him down and release him. She said, if we just had a person running upstairs to get him and bring him down, it'd cut that time in half. I mean, if you just, I've spent a three hour, three hours over there touring that jail and talking to people and you'll learn more in just a short order, talking, it's so easy to sit out in that parking lot, throw mudballs at that jail, but actually go inside and see what's going on. And the people that actually work there. I mean, that's, it sounds like such a simple solution. Hire one person, a bunk and junk officer. And cut that release time in half. Now, that sounds too simple, but a lot of times, good ideas are simple.
That's right. That's right. I agree. And I absolutely love the, the sentiment around hearing from the people that are literally doing the hard, hard work every day.
Right.
You know, to your point, we can look at it from the outside and think we have all the solutions. But, you know, the truth is, the people that are doing the hard work often are the ones with the, the most creative and, you know, strategic ideas. And so, um, yeah, I.
Did I explain to you what a bunk and junk officer?
Yes.
Get your bunk and your junk.
Yes. Let's go. Yeah. I mean, I don't know that I'm a fan of the title, the job title, to be honest with you. But, but I understand the concept.
Yeah.
For sure.
You have three of those. So that they can have some decent, rotating.
Right.
And, and then it becomes simple. The person that they're bringing them to downstairs doesn't have to be an officer. That's an administrative.
Right.
No, no, nobody is, nobody is coming down to the exit post and you can start trouble.
Right. Yeah. Well, I, I'm grateful for your, um, expertise, Jeff. I think, you know, the, you bring it, it to your point, a different vantage point, perhaps what we've had previously. And, and I would certainly like what you have raised in terms of a, a need for just digging a little bit deeper into, you know, the, those procedures, those processes, um, but also even from my financial standpoint. I'm wondering if that would be best suited or almost like a first project, mini project for the policies and procedures subcommittee. Um, I would love to see that be, you know, the, the priority. Okay. Wonderful. All right. I don't think that we need, uh, a, a motion for any purpose outside of just our discussion. Um, so thank, thank you everyone for that. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is discussion and possible action regarding access to reentry processes um, inside the detention center. And again, this was an agenda item that I think emerged out of the last cab meeting. So if anybody has any, um, perspectives on this or was privy to that discussion, I appreciate it.
This probably came from me also.
Jeff, you are such a troublemaker.
Talking, talking about reentry, there's, uh, really interested in the processes that we have. So maybe this is our second project.
Go ahead.
The, uh, we, we, I can't identify a reentry process that is, is in place where we are really, I mean, there's pieces. But where we're really making those connections to services and resources on the outside. There is a model program that, uh, was being operated by the Department of Mental Health and DOC in partnership with DOC, uh, through one, uh, DOC facility, uh, that received all sorts of attention nationwide. It was looked at as a model program. Number one, the state hasn't expanded it to all sit, uh, uh, facilities, which that's another comment. But it's certainly something I think we can look at. We have some people still in the community who are part of putting that together, who I believe we could talk to. And, uh, it made a difference. It made a huge difference in recidivism. Again, going back to what we're talking about in the jail and what raises costs, recidivism. And that has been being talked about for, for many years. Let's actually help people as they exit a facility, this facility, to, to then be able to be connected to their services at the community level so that we can get them moving forward with their lives and so that they can be productive parts of the community. Uh, whatever that might be, whether that is, uh, uh, treatment services that are there, links to housing. And there are multiple links to, although they're drying up a little bit right now, but there's links to housing and solutions that we can have, uh, have. They should be leaving this jail with all the credentials and documentation that they need to be moving forward and, and, uh, have an idea of how they're gonna be functioning back within the community. That can all start early. Really starts at intake. We have to start thinking about people exiting this facility. And, uh, it, it, it's part of what we can build into everything that we do as a, as a jail facility that really moves us, uh, on, in a direction of being responsive to community need. So.
Any other comments on that?
I totally agree. And it has to be more than, you're done. Here's a list of resources.
Here's a brochure, you know, of, of, of just a little bit of case management, uh, could make a difference in recidivism.
And then helping to get exactly the thing.
You know, one of the things that's gonna come up, and I know that would be pushed back on by some people, well, it's cost. You know, how are you gonna, gonna pay for this? There's actually funding for this type of thing. I know we're talking about cuts at a federal level, but there's funding for this in this federal bill that's coming out. There are, there is funding in Oklahoma through, uh, seven eighty-one money and through opiate money that could absolutely impact this. It's just a matter of us getting together and some of that money is being left on the tables or with some of the opiate money. These are certainly things where we can work, work some partnerships. And, uh, it would be wonderful to see somebody leave this facility and go straight to another facility to where they could, uh, be connected to everything that they need to go, uh, need to be connected to or have those services available and making sure that they have a place to, to be. And I think there's interest in that, the community, certainly some good partnership, uh, that we can pull together.
Totally agree. I mean, I'm a, I'm a big fan of just that, that case management. You know, we, it is our responsibility as a community to ensure, uh, not only the health and safety of the individuals that are within the detention center, but also that they are, they land where they need to land in a healthy way, um, in our community. It only is, it's a service to them, but also to our, you know, our, our broader community. Um, I'm wondering if similarly to the prior, uh, agenda item, if this isn't a good topic for one of the subcommittees, uh, more specifically the operations. Thoughts on that?
I think that would be great.
Yeah.
It's a good place to start.
Okay, wonderful. All right, I have made note of that. Any other discussion on this agenda item before we move on to our final, final topic? Okay. So, uh, our final agenda item is to discuss the timing of our next, uh, it's called a special meeting, um, uh, for the Citizens Advisory Board. Um, you know, we are in September, which means we only have three months left of the year, which means we only have three special meetings left to schedule. Um, I would ideally like at the next meeting for us to, uh, develop a, a plan for when our standing meetings will be. That way we can submit those appropriately, um, and those will just already be on, uh, on the schedule. And quite frankly, for my own, for my own personal reasons, um, they'll already be on my calendar and I can just work around them. Um, it makes it a whole lot easier for me. So, um, and I'm sure for each of you, we're all very busy individuals. So let's take a look at, um, some dates that could potentially work for our October meeting. Um, let's see here, pull up my calendar. If we were to look at a month from now, that would be the week of the twentieth. The twentieth is wide open. What about the morning of the twenty-second? At nine, okay. The twenty-third at nine is open, you said? I have some conflicts. What about eleven on the twenty-second? Does that work? For the rest of the board? Eleven AM on October twenty-second? Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I have that noted. Sharon, we're good to go on that. Great. I will say that we'll have to be right and tidy on that because I have another, another commitment. Um, uh, so we'll have to hold to an hour for that meeting. That, I, I trust that we can do that. Okay, any final, uh, general remarks before, from the board before we adjourn today?
I do have a question. Can we go ahead and look at dates for the November?
I think that's a brilliant idea. Let's do it. Could we look at, just to maintain consistency, the nineteenth, the Wednesday at eleven? Does that work for you, Sharon? Okay.
Um, on, on that day?
Yep.
The, the chamber stated the economy.
Oh, is that day?
Eleven thirty.
Could we do ten? What's that? Sorry. Oh, at nine. So no. Okay. Let's look at what about the twentieth at ten thirty? Okay.
Any room on the eighteenth of the Tuesday at nine?
I could move something. Does that work? We would just have to be out. I, yeah. Okay. I cannot do the afternoon of the eighteenth. Okay, what about the seventeenth at nine or ten? What would you all prefer? Nine? Let's do it. November seventeenth at nine AM. Okay. Great. Thank you so much, everyone, for your flexibility. So just to confirm, our October meeting will be October twenty-second at eleven AM. And our November meeting will be November seventeenth at nine AM. and our November meeting will be November seventeenth at nine AM.
And will we, what about December?
So yeah, we don't have to do that now, we can, yeah. Of course, October twenty-second at eleven AM and November seventeenth at nine AM. And then, like I said, I, my ideal will be to find consistency in scheduling so that we know it's the, the this day of the month at this time. So, uh, maybe be giving some thought as to what that might be for you, and I will also do the same, and we can discuss that at the next meeting. We'll put that on the agenda. Alright, any other remarks on behalf of the board before we adjourn?
Fine job, Chair.
Oh, well, thank you so much, Vice Chair. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Some of.
Second. Call the roll. We, we had, we had a couple people that were very eager, everybody pushed it. Yes.
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 We are adjourned, thank you all.